Okay, we're ready. Welcome to the regular Half Moon Bay City Council meeting of November 15th, 2022. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to recent amendments to the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. After allowing teleconferencing during a proclaimed state of emergency, where local officials had recommended social distancing. This legislation is AB 361. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar and live Spanish interpretation will be available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public comment portions, attendees may use the raise your hand feature. It will be called upon and unmuted when it is your turn. The meeting will also be streamed on Channel 20, on Pacific Coast TV and on Facebook at facebook.com/cityofhalfmoonbay. If you'd like to participate by phone, you can dial in at 669-900-9128 using webinar ID 955-3561-4263. If joining by phone, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Victor, could you explain how to use the Spanish interpretation this evening?
Gladly. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, Mr. Chittister, Ms. Enberg, City Staff, and all members of the public. Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. Esta reunión se celebrará íntegramente por teleconferencia. Todos los miembros del Consejo y el personal solo participarán a través de la plataforma Zoom utilizando el proceso descrito a continuación. La reunión se lleva a cabo de conformidad con las recientes enmiendas a las reglas de teleconferencias requeridas por la ley Ralph M. Brown, que permite ciertas teleconferencias durante un estado proclamado de emergencia cuando los funcionarios locales han recomendado el distanciamiento social, es decir, AB 361. El propósito de esta 361 es de proporcionar el ambiente ahora sí más seguro para el público, los funcionarios electos y el personal, al tiempo que permite la operación continua del gobierno y la participación pública durante la pandemia de ese COVID-19. También le queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes que la reunión será totalmente interpretada en español y para poder acceder el canal de audio, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono de un globo, es decir, un mundo que aparece al fondo de su pantalla. Después de eso aparecerá un menú y entonces usted podrá seleccionar su idioma. Ahora sí, se une por teléfono para alzar la mano, pulsaría la estrella nueve y para de silenciar sería la estrella si es seis. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Gracias, Victor. Also providing interpretation tonight is Nicholas Veskevich. Thank you, Nicholas. I'm calling the meeting to order. Could I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Rabeck?
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Here.
Mayor Reddick?
Here.
You have a forum?
And I'm just mentioning that Councilmember Brownstone is out of the country at the moment and will not be participating. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda unless anyone would like to pull any of those items.
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick? Mayor Reddick?
It looks like she might actually be frozen.
That's what I was just wondering.
We could move forward with a three votes in favor. Oh, there's, she's back.
You're muted, Mayor.
Was I froze? Couldn't tell. It looked like we were frozen. Okay. So where are we? I asked for a motion. I asked Harvey to read.
Yeah, so then I had asked for your vote on the motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, so we already had a second?
Yes. This is on approval of the agenda, not the consent counter.
Oh, right. Okay. Yeah, so could I have a roll call, please?
We did that. You just have to vote yes or no. Do you approve the agenda?
Yes. Yes.
Special carries.
Sorry, thrown off balance here. Okay, we're now moving to public forum. Do we have any members of the public who would like to address the council?
We do. Our first speaker is Mike Ferreira.
And thank you for the opportunity to to address you. I'm calling regarding a petition that's being circulated in the city to modify Measure D, our 1% plus 0.5% initiative that was passed in 1999 that has held up all this time. I am really concerned about the damage that would be done to Measure D by this petition. It's being marketed as only affecting ADUs, but it goes way beyond ADUs in many ways. And I'm a little worried that people may not see this. And so I am hopeful that the council is aware of all of these problems. For one thing, we have a RENA goal to meet of 480 units over the next eight years. And it's very, very conceivable that we can meet that for those 480 units with the current Measure D. Everyone knows that RENA is aggressive, but Measure D can deliver to the RENA requirement. There's no need for us to double the number of ADUs or to give ADUs who will agree to five years of affordability, no Measure D requirement. I mean, for Pete's sake, if we get affordable housing, affordable housing has to be dedicated for 35 years. What? This is a giveaway. There's a bunch of other stuff in there that's highly problematic. And I'm hopeful that to the degree that the council members can, that they will not encourage people to do this because it could very easily double what Measure D now gives us. So let's understand now that an ADU doesn't pay for its impacts and it has impacts. So they're already getting a big break, you know, whether it's schools, whether it's circulation, whether it's even a water permit or a sewer permit, none of that stuff or park dedications, fees, all of that stuff, they're getting a freebie already. So is this really something we want to double in our build plan? Thank you for giving me a few moments to address this and I'm hopeful that this will not become an issue before the people of Half Moon Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Our next speaker is Joanne Rakowski.
Thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment this evening. My name is Joanne Rakowski. I'm a member of Coastside Faith in Action and the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community. Over the past months, you have heard stories from members of the ALAS Affordable Housing Committee. They are essential workers on the coast side, yet they struggle to find and to keep rental housing that they can afford. Supply is short and the costs are high. The families crowd together, work long hours, and yet must still make the choice of paying the rent or buying food. Later tonight, you will be discussing the list of priorities being considered by the League of California Cities for its 2023 legislative platform and identify the Half Moon Bay City Council's top priorities. One of the 12 sections on the League's list is housing and land use. As you review these items, I urge you to consider them in light of the very low-income members of our coastal community who need affordable housing now. Labative planning throughout the region, reduction of burdensome requirements impacting building, and a true commitment to relieving the affordable housing shortage are all essential. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joanne. Our next speaker is Kristalene Gate.
Thank you so much, Kristalene of the Coastside Chamber. And I just wanted to let everybody know that the Four Nights of Lights starts next Friday with the official city tree lighting at MacDutra Park. And we've added something special this year, an in memoriam of coastiders. And we're really excited to dedicate the lights on the tree to those coastiders. It's the inaugural one, so we will plan on doing this year after year. We have 23 locals that we will be memorializing. And some of them even will have ornaments on the tree. So we do hope that everybody can come out and celebrate them on Friday, the 25th at 6:00 PM. And then the following night is the traditional parade night with all kinds of fun activities planned for adults and kids, December 2nd. And if anybody wants to enter the parade, there is a really easy form on coastsidechamber.com. And we'd love to have as many groups and businesses represented as possible. The night after that, we're doing something, or the Friday after that, on the 9th, we're doing something new. It's an ugly sweater party. Everybody loves it. Get your most atrocious attire out. There will be awards and prizes for ugliest dog sweater, ugliest family of sweaters, you name it. We've got gifts for it. And there'll be free food and by Pizza Pie and a DJ. And that will also be on the corner of Maine and Kelly. So we really hope it's just going to be a good, family-friendly time. And then the following Friday on the 16th, in the Cunha Market parking lot, we will be showing a family movie elf. And again, prizes for those who want to dress up as an elf and really get into it. And we'll have all kinds of goodies for that as well. So we're really hoping that community members come out and celebrate the holidays in any one or all of these different ways. And thank you so very much.
Thank you, Kristalene. I have no other hands raised to bear.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to proclamations and presentations. And we have one this evening. So this is in recognition of Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Half Moon Bay recognizes that the city and the broader coast side were built upon the homelands and villages of distinct tribal groups, including the Ramaitush, who continue to live in this region generally referred to as Olone Territory. Whereas the city of Half Moon Bay values the cultural lifeways of the Ramaitush and the unbroken commitment to environmental stewardship, including sophisticated and sustainable land management, tending of endemic plant and animal life, medicinal advancements, and the carefully balanced managed landscape. And whereas the city of Half Moon Bay honors the dignity and resilience of the Ramaitush, whose populations, homelands, and lifeways were devastated by policies and practices, including the California Mission System, the Gold Rush Settlement, and federal relocation and termination. And whereas Native American Heritage Month was declared by the United States on August 3rd, 1990, recognizing that Native Americans are the original inhabitants of the lands that now constitute the USA. And whereas Native American Heritage Month should be used to act and persevere through the historical implications of colonization on all original inhabitants of this region and to celebrate the healing and education continuing through their descendants. Now therefore be it known that the city of Half Moon Bay is hereby proclaim November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month and calls upon all the people of Half Moon Bay to observe this month in expression of our relation, shared humanity, and respect for the historical and present-day contributions of the Ramaitush and all Native Americans living in this region.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to introduce Karen Decker. She's our community and economic vitality manager here in the city manager's office. And she has some information and resources she'd like to share in the spirit of this proclamation.
Great. Thank you so much, Matthew, and good evening, Madam Mayor and Council and community. This is our first Native American Heritage Month proclamation by the city of Half Moon Bay. So to Matthew's point, I would just like to briefly share a screen. And I just wanted to acknowledge that this first proclamation was put together through consultation with many different perspectives, including local Native American community members and Bay Area scholars and publicly accessible data. And when staff started consulting with community members and scholars about how to go about this proclamation, we quickly came upon the realization of what we already suspected, and that is that language is really important. We know that there were dozens of tribal bands and linguistic groups that were distinct, and they were politically autonomous throughout the coast side and the greater Bay Area. So we really tried to avoid non-native terms that lump people together across broad territories. So in our research, we learned that there's a tendency to use collective terms that can undermine a lot of cultural revitalization efforts by descendants of these groups. So if you think about, say, a family in Berkeley and you think about a family in Morgan Hill, and then another person refers to them as the Californians, you see how that could be problematic because it's just such a broad brush stroke. So this is a map that the faculty at American Indian Studies at San Francisco State University recommended. It's not perfect, but it's a starting point. And you can search along territories and languages. And so we landed on the term Ramaitush because it refers to the coast side region as closely as possible as a linguistic identifier. This is just a brief snapshot of the territories and languages of people who lived and continue to live, and what we refer to as the coast. So you hear, see different tribes listed there and then languages by region. And then also just wanted to take this opportunity to share some resources with the community. So that map that San Francisco State recommended is nativeland.ca. That was what you saw in the last slide. Also, our local Half Moon Bay History Association has information on their website. The next two are also of kind of an educational nature. And then the last two relate to health. The Native American Health Center throughout San Francisco and Oakland has a lot of great information pertaining to health of all kind, including physical and behavioral health. And then I just wanted to include that last phone number. That's an all-nations crisis hotline, and it's monitored by Native American staff. So you can text the word SUPPORT to 402-275-2444. My contact information is on the screen. Happy to have any conversations, answer any questions. And then I just wanted to thank our Indigenous community members who provided guidance. I would name them, but I don't have their permission, so I won't. And also Dr. Praia from San Francisco State, he's the Chair of American Indian Studies, Mark Higlamah, the Half Moon Bay History Association, and then my colleague Jalisa for her hard work and intention. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Karen. And I just, I just wanted to point out that I think we as a city and as staff recognize that in order for us to really serve all of the communities and individuals that live here on the coast, it is important for us to begin to understand and show humility towards our Indigenous folks that have been here and their their ancestors who lived here before us. And so we're just on the beginning steps of that, of learning and understanding. And hopefully in the future, we'll be able to bring ideas on how we as a city can be more supportive of this community and provide more recognition and support to this community. And we just appreciate the council for your support. And as Karen said, the community for their willingness to share with us and engage with us. And I just want to point out all the hard work that Karen and Jalisa put into this. This is a sensitive topic, and I think they've really approached it with humility and in the right spirit. So thank you to staff for their work on this.
Thank you, staff. I'd also like to point out that this area is a renewed focus by the Half Moon Bay Historic Association as well. They had a recent program that I couldn't make because it was conflicted with the city council meetings. But they intend to have more programming around this topic as well. So that is good news. So we have a mid-coast community council update, but we don't have anybody from the MCC to do this presentation, but they've asked that that I give this presentation. So I will do it and try to be quick here. The Quarry Park Master Plan is nearing completion. There's no EIR on the overall plan, but there will be EIRs on component projects or some level of environmental assessment, including fire control projects as there's a new fire road being constructed, the pump track, et cetera. The master plan for this project will also address drainage issues impacting the surrounding community, and those are quite large impacts. MCC is sponsoring community workshops with the County Public Works, including safe routes to school in Montero and sidewalk access to El Granada. There is informational planning support activity on the RENA, that is the regional housing assessment and how it affects the mid-coast. And also more information coming on the coastal trail planning in the mid-coast and south coast, environmental and health concerns relating to plastic turf, which I think we want to follow, et cetera. They're looking at the multimodal parallel trail between El Granada and Half Moon Bay city limits is nearing completion and awaiting connection with Half Moon Bay, and they're very excited by this project. They've submitted a final comment letter on Cypress Point Affordable Housing. And an environmental assessment is not expected for several months, so that will be reviewed at that time. But the MCC, the time, position on that project. Other quarterly newsletters going out this week, and you can sign up for that newsletter in MCC Agendas at the website midcoastcommunitycouncil.org. And transitional planning is underway to deal with the fact that the MCC will likely lose four members, gain two new members, and have to appoint two more new members who will be working with a new supervisor in the new years. And that's all I have there. I don't have any mayor's announcements of community activities. I was going to discuss the tree lighting, but Kristalene has given us quite a detailed update on that. And we have no report outs from closed sessions because we haven't had any closed session meetings in a while. And now we're moving on to city manager updates to council. And those will include Heritage Downtown, Pullman Ditch, and Storm Preparedness.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have several updates for you tonight. The Heritage Downtown update, we are moving to our next meeting. Unfortunately, the staff member that's working on that, it was unavailable tonight. So we'll bring that forward on December 6th. So we'll start with our interim Public Works Director, Maz Bozerguinha. And he will share some winter weather updates and then turn the time over to Jalisa Costa to talk about our recent cohort of CSFA grant recipients. And then to finish, we actually have Lena Silverman from Supervisor Don Horsey's office at the county to talk about a gun buyback event that is coming up. Maz?
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, everyone. The first update we have tonight is on storm preparedness. And we do apologize. I'll actually be talking a little bit about Pullman Ditch with regards to storm preparedness as part of this presentation. So just as part of our annual outreach efforts, we wanted to make sure that we focused, oops, sorry. We wanted to make sure we provided some tips to prepare for the upcoming rainstorms. We've had a couple of nice events so far, and hopefully we'll have some more. So just wanted the folks to remember to make sure you check your gutters and rainwater leaders and downspouts, make sure they're not blocked, make sure there's no debris. We want to make sure we keep our leaves and debris out of storm drains and ditches as much as we can possibly do. And that includes any ditches that you may have in your backyard that may look like it's part of your backyard. But if it's connected to your neighbors, please try to keep those clean. Make a list of any zones in your area and your property that may hold water. If you have any particular low spots, you want to make sure that if you need a sump pump, you have something that's available to you. Obviously, we want to make sure we don't store any hazardous materials in areas that may be subject to any flooding or stormwater concerns. And of course, there is a sandbag station that is a self-service sandbag station at the train depot located at 110 Higgins Canyon Road that is available during the daylight hours. So please stop by. There's bags and sand there. You can fill up your bags and take them back and have them ready. I would not wait for a storm to come up. Please take advantage of that and come during the nicer weather, nicer times. Have it ready and stocked piled at home so that in case you need it quickly, it's available and easily accessible. Oops, I'm sorry. Just some tips during the, any rainstorms themselves, please make sure you try to keep, make sure you keep children away from creeks and large storm drains. That includes any pipes, any pipe drains, any culverts under the highway, as well as any open channel ditches that may be around your homes. Make sure you store any emergency supplies in airtight containers and keep them in locations that are easily accessible, such as your car or near the front of your home, depending on your situation. Try to keep your car fueled or charged. A lot of times, there may be power outages that are impacted with regards to any rainstorm. So again, try to keep yourself ready. If your car, if you have a gas car, make sure it's filled. If it's electric, make sure it's charged and ready to go. Feel free to call Half Moon Bay Public Works. Our number listed here, 650-726-7177. Any significant blockages or water backups, please let us know. If it's after hours, please let dispatch know and they can get ahold of our on-call public works staff. And if there's any, of course, if there's any immediate flood And if there's any, of course, if there's any immediate flooding or, or safety threat, please call nine, one, one. Don't, don't call the public works department if it's an emergency and it's a safety concern. Call nine, one, one. First responders will be the best to help on scene and public works can support afterwards. Things you can do right now for folks that have not registered for SNC Alert, please do so. We, there, it's a wonderful system that provides emails and text messages in case of any emergencies. Remember to try to keep supplies that last up to seventy-two hours. If you could go longer than that, that would be great. But at minimum, three days. If you haven't done so already, there's opportunities to create your emergency evacuation plan for your family. There's a lot of great information and then I will share, that's on our website. I'll show you where that is in a moment. And a new feature that's been coming up is our Zone Haven. So if you go to the website, community.zonehaven.com, you can look at an interactive map that is populated by first responders. And what, if there's any evacuations or any major concerns, there may be some information there that would be available to you. SNC Alert is the most important one. So folks, make sure that we, you signed up for that. And if you're interested in, in looking at maps and getting more involved, you can go to the community.zonehaven.com. And as far as additional resources, we have a lot of links and phone numbers and contacts that I, that we talked about here at this quick presentation. In, under the emergency preparedness tab that is on our main website, www.hvcity.com. Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to remind people also, if you're out driving in a rainstorm and, and you see that there's standing water in the road or in intersection, it's best to avoid it. It can be a lot deeper than you think. I actually drove into one on Stage Road in Pescadero once several years ago. And I was lucky to get out. And you know, a year ago at this time, during one of the big rainstorms, we had some people actually drowned. El Camino near the highway eighty, three eighty bridge, because the water was so deep. So you have to be very careful about driving into standing water. It might be problematic. And the other thing is, I understand that SMC Alert is undergoing a transition to a new subscription service. And I, I got a notice. So you might look in your email for that notice and, and make sure that you remain registered to receive the emergency alerts. And I forget what the name of the new.
Mayor, if I, if I can, if, if I could, that one. For, they, basically, the, they switched over to a new software called Rave. But from what everyone is asking is, one, you don't have to change anything. It was an automatic transition over. And it was Everbridge. Now it's Rave. What, what all the emergency managers across the county are, are asking the community is just remember it's SMC Alert. It doesn't matter who the underlying software provider is. But thank you for, for identifying that and noting that because there was some notices that went out. And I'm thankful, November ninth, it was a seamless transition over to the new software. And I think it, it, it went as well as you could possibly ask for that. And I think Captain Albin and her crew have been doing an excellent job of locally using SMC Alert. I think judiciously, but, but adequately around the community. I hope the, I hope you and the community are also as pleased as, as, as we are about, about that.
Thanks for clarifying that. It was confusing. So, thank you, Joe. Okay, that's all I have.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present an update on the Community Services Financial Assistance Cohort. Next slide, please. The CSFA is a grant program that supports local nonprofit organizations that serve Half Moon Bay. For this funding cycle, the eligibility requirements are closely connected to the Coastside Recovery Initiative. This is based on team thrive recommendations of strengthening capacity of safety net providers and developing a more coordinated and integrated approach among service providers. The city council allocated three hundred thousand dollars for this program. Next slide. Our grant recipients for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three are ALAS, Coastside Hope, Senior Coastsideers, the Cabrio Education Foundation, Abundant Grace, El Centro de Libertad, Coastside Adult Day Hall Center, the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastside, and Services Dental. As part of the grant program, these recipients were also expected to participate in cohort convenings that would allow them to discuss their organization's challenges and best practices. This also encouraged the organizations to see everything to an integrated approach among their organizations. Next slide. The cohorts thoughtfully designed objectives are to strengthen relationships and learn more about the CSFA approach. And ultimately identify and agree on a potential focus area for collaboration and collective action. The first cohort meeting was hosted in early October. And we invited leadership team members of each organization. And they had the opportunity to deepen their relationships, learn more about each other, participate in small and large group discussions, and ask for a short survey that defined the future of the work for the cohort. Next slide. The group identified the following top three focus areas for collective action. They're listed in order of importance, visibility, housing, and funding sustainability. The city staff is already preparing to host the next cohort session, which includes technical assistance from the city and other providers that will support organizational visibility, hoping to elevate the profile of safety net providers through various means. In addition to the cohort, sorry, in addition to visibility, the cohort will also address one of the most common and critical challenges of the coast, identifying and working on short-term housing solutions. And this will be done at later sessions. The next slide, I think, is just my contact. Madam Mayor?
Thank you for that. It's hard to believe that several months have gone by. Everybody's in the thick of it. So it's, it's good to know that people are meeting and working together. You know, I think that's the path to our future as a resilient community. So thanks for all you're doing there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Hello, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, City Manager, City Attorney, got some staff, members of the public. I'm so happy to see y'all today and I'll, I'll try and be brief. Do we have the flyer available to show? Awesome. Thank you so much. So I just want to let you all know that on Saturday, December third, San Mateo County, along with some law enforcement partners and city partners and the citizens for San Mateo County Gun Buyback, will be sponsoring an anonymous gun buyback. So this event will be held at one thousand Skyway Road in San Carlos. The buyback hours will be from ten AM to two PM. Just to, just so you know, attendees must transport their firearms unloaded and in the trunks of their vehicles. We're doing it a little bit differently this time. So we have three different categories. Fifty dollars will be paid for non-functioning firearms, a hundred dollars for handguns and rifles, and two hundred dollars for assault weapons and ghost guns as classified by the state of California. So recent statistics locally have shown that the majority of gun violence incidents in our county are a result of suicide. And it is our hope that these buybacks that have to date resulted in over two thousand firearms being turned in will help reduce gun violence in our communities. So I welcome you all to share this flyer. If anyone would like to contact me with any questions, you can find my email and phone number on the San Mateo County District three webpage, or the city manager can also share it. So thank you so much. I appreciate your time and I tried to be as brief as I could.
Thank you, Lena. Good information. Good project. Do we have any other updates to council?
Madam Mayor, that concludes our updates for tonight.
So then we're moving on to the consent calendar. So would appreciate if, if nobody wants to pull an item, that you make a motion, but read the items as part of. You're muted, Deborah.
I move that we waive the reading of resolutions and ordinances that we accept the warrants list for the month of October twenty twenty-two. That we re-ratify the resolution to continue holding public meetings remotely, AB three sixty-one. That we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Six to the professional services agreement with Circle Point for preparation of an environmental impact report for the proposed Hyatt Place Hotel. That we adopt a resolution authorizing the reclassification of associate planner to senior planner in a community development department.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Hilaire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rebec?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pedros?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item two, ordinances and public hearings, and we have none this evening. Item three, resolutions and staff reports. But item three A is the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project Update. And because I live close to the area that this project covers, I am needing to refuse myself. So if somebody could just text, this, this item is concluding, I will return for the balance of the items. So Vice Mayor, you are going to need for this item.
Okay. Item three A will be presented by whom?
Madam Mayor, our interim public works director, Maz Bozerguina, will take this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate that. While I was looking for my mute button, let me pop this up real quick. All right. Thanks, everyone. Happy to be here tonight to talk about the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project. Give a quick update and discuss next steps on our project. Just a quick overview of tonight. So we'll, we'll just, I have a, we'll show the request that we have tonight. Provide a little bit of background, provide some updates and, and look at some of the funding strategies. And then we have some tentative construction timelines and, and then we'll go back to the recommendation. So tonight, we're asking for the council to receive an update on this, on the progress of the project and where we are to date. And then we'll be asking for approval to the amended capital improvement project age phasing this project, the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project. Just a little bit of background, this project has been important and critical to the, to our product, to our plan. Poplar Be, Poplar Street is a collector street that is identified as a connection point between our downtown and the, and the beef beach and the bluffs. And with that, the city was recently received a grant through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission back in twenty seventeen in the amount of one point two oh two million dollars. And the improvements at the time were looking to do a project from Railroad Avenue to Main Street. We had started working and commenced on some design. Unfortunately, in twenty twenty, there were some COVID impacts and the project was suspended at that time. Then fast forward to August of twenty twenty-one, the project restarted through council action. And after a lot of various meetings and conversations and, and community input, we went to the planning commission and received approval of the coastal, of the coastal development permit. And that was done in February of this year after modifications and changes to the, to the plans and conversations with the community. So what we are looking at tonight is the overall project scope. We have, we have, from this point, been looking at the project as a, as a complete street improvement from railroad to Main Street. And some of the, some of the improvements and some of the phasing that has been, that we're looking at tonight is essentially the, the overall project limits and looking at doing a phase approach and essentially looking at the geographic boundaries as the determining factor in, in that. So as far as the, the project scope itself, either side, so the, the project overall is looking at a concrete sidewalk on the north side of Poplar Street, a continuous from Main Street to Railroad, and then a DG path on the south side. That was part of the comments and considerations that was made as part of the planning commission approval process.
Excuse me, Maz. For the public, what is a DG pathway?
Sorry, the DG is the decomposed granite pathway. Apologies there. I will do a better job of explaining our acronyms. So the decomposed granite pathway provides a more softer feel. And so that's, that was what was approved as part of the south side of the street. We are looking at increased utilizing planter strips and bio-retention areas as much as possible, reducing our impervious surface area as well as providing areas for stormwater to percolate and, and filter, filter through. There was a lot of conversations about the type of surface that we utilize for the parking spaces. And what we are looking at is using a gravel, it's not kind of a gravel, but, but more of a, more of a compacted gravel, not a loose gravel in the parking lanes to again reduce the amount of impervious surface and provide for circulation of stormwater as, as, as available. We're looking at maintaining our existing trees as well as planting new trees as well as quite a bit of improvements to, for, or, I'm sorry, for traffic calming purposes. We're looking at bulbouts at some of our certain areas as well as some traffic circles. And then implementing bladder crosswalks or what I call, what we, what you will normally call a high-visibility crosswalk, where you have the longitudinal lines as well as the perpendicular lines as you're crossing. And so what we're looking at doing is essentially the phasing this project between two major segments, the first one being from Main Street to Highway one, and then the second phase being from Highway one to Railroad Avenue. Looking at the funding breakdown, given this, this grant was received back in twenty seventeen. And so with that, we've been, we received the engineer's estimate with the sixty-five percent design. And that project estimate came to five point two million, five point two five million with the changes required as part of the coastal development permit as well as the desires of the community to implement the project. And so looking at that, there was obviously a very significant shortfall with, with the full project. So we were looking at a little over four million to fund that project. Then, but, but by being able to phase it, looking at the Highway one as the main geographic boundary, we are able to work on phase one, which would be main to Highway one. It's a slightly shorter segment. And so it allows us to utilize all of the funds for the Obeck two grants that have, that are set to expire by middle of next year. And so by phasing it, we're looking at a smaller shortfall, still a shortfall of seven hundred forty-eight thousand. And as part of our, these, these again are all estimates. So as far as the overall project specifics and the contract amount, we will be going through the public bidding process and will have a more definitive number from the contract from a, from the little bidder at that time. Right now, this is again based on the engineer's estimate and, and we'll see what those numbers come back at. I will say that with some of the, with the economics that we're, that we're seeing, there could be an opportunity for some of the, for the bidding environment to be a little bit more favorable for us. So I will keep my fingers crossed that we do get good numbers. But we won't know the full number until we go through that process. And, and as part of that, we will take a closer look at other funding sources such as our SB one funding and gas, which is part of the gas tax. There's measure M allocations and other, and some deferred street improvement funds and, as well as other funding sources that we'll be bringing back to the council for discussion at a later date. So as far as the, so again, just a quick schedule timing, we are, we currently have a sixty five percent design. I checked it. They were supposed to be uploaded on the project website, but they have yet to be uploaded. They will be up there first thing tomorrow morning. If anybody's interested to take a look at the full design. We are moving forward with designing it and completing everything. And what we will be doing is bidding it in different phases. So the design will be completed early requirements of the coastal development permit. And then we will be bidding it in phases from there on out. So we're hoping to advertise early next year for the phase one and then look at opening bid soon after and starting construction before the summer time. Again, our, so again, our resolution, the, the recommendation tonight will be a resolution approving the amended capital improvement project phasing for the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Payfee Project. I do have project plan second. I'm happy to share at the end. Yes, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, can you give me some estimate of what percentage of the total cost, and I know it's an estimate, the sixty five percent design is? In other words, we're, we're at sixty five percent design now, but we haven't finished this design. We certainly haven't put it out to bid yet. Are we talking about, we're talking about seven hundred and forty some thousand dollars that we need just to get this part done? How much more are we going to need? Is it, is it going to be three times as much? Twice as much? Do we have any idea?
Yeah, the, it, it's going to be about twice as much, given the overall distance. I have, I can provide a better breakdown for you, but essentially it would be, based on the, the distance, it's just double the, the length between west and east. So we, that's where you have, we have about two million for this project. So the, the other project would be close to a little over three million for that full estimate of the five point two five.
Okay, but for phase one?
Maz, I think the question, if I could, Vice Mayor, I, I think that if I could clarify the question, I think for, I think you're asking, do you, do we think that the price of phase one will substantially go up as we reach ninety five percent design and, and bidding? Is that what is?
Correct.
What I, that, that's the question, Maz.
Okay.
Are you, how comfortable are you that the sixty five percent is giving you a good number to go with an estimate?
Thanks, John. No, I appreciate that. Yeah, no, so the, the sixty five is more along the lines of the, the completeness of the technical design. We generally don't update the estimate beyond that. There's small refinements, but there's no major changes to the design itself. So the estimate that we have for the sixty five is generally the, the estimate that we will move forward with as far as bidding.
Great, thank you. That's exactly right.
Thank you. And thank you, John, for the, for knocking some sense into me. So with that, I have, if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. But essentially, so we, we also had notified the residents along Poplar that have been invested in interest in this project. So with, you know, with that, we, we provided postcards to a lot of our residents out there. And so if there's any questions, we're still meeting with folks. We're still going through again the design for the whole project. So with regards to any questions on the overall design, we, we're happy to hear from anybody on either side of Highway one. Council member Jimenez?
Thank you, Maz. So actually, I have a, a comment in the possibility of making a change or adding a change to the phase one part of Poplar. And this is to the intersection of Poplar and Main Street. I have a, I have several conversations with the community about the stop sign that is south of, of Poplar. They try out the, the driveway for the senior, for the senior center. So what would be the possibility of making the change of moving the stop sign to the south of the driveway? So it will be, eventually will become a four, a four way stop.
We, that's, thank you for, for that comment, council member. I, I will take a closer look to see if we can do that. The, the challenge is the skew of the intersection. Unfortunately, it makes visibility, the visibility is going to be the, the concerning factor. We can take a close look and see how that geometry looks. We can certainly incorporate it into any improvements that we do. It wouldn't be a huge cost to move, if it was just a matter of restriping and relocating the stop bar and the, and the post and the sign itself. If there's more improvements required with any geometric changes, that will be something we'll take a, I'll take a closer look at, see if it's feasible or not.
When you say about the visibility, it will be about the visibility on East Poplar coming to Main and be able to see the stop, the traffic stop on south of the stop sign.
Correct. That's correct. That would be the, that would be the, the, the main concerning point. The folks coming southbound on Main Street would, would see the oncoming. It's really the, it's, yeah, it's, it's the eastbound traffic on Poplar coming to Main Street. That would be my concern. But again, we, I'll take a close look and if the geometry and the line of sight is, we'll, we'll grant that change. We can certainly look at making that happen.
Yeah, please do. I don't know if you, if you travel on, on Main Street, especially in the mornings, when parents are taking the children to school, a secret or in the, in the afternoons for the big time, it creates, you know, traffic at that intersection. It is difficult to go in, into the driveway when there's traffic going north on Main Street and at the start of, of Poplar. So please take a look at the visibility or the four, to make it a four way stop. And that is going to help a lot with, with the traffic, I think. And that's what the comments that come to me for, for the members of the community. So, and that's my only comment in the question. Thank you.
Maz?
Yes.
I'm curious as to whether or not you've had any pushback from the residents who have been asked to pay their fair share of the improvements on Poplar.
There have been some, some concerns and we've, we've heard some, we've had some folks reach out to us with regards to that and looking at, you know, the cost and the payments in the payment plan. We have yet to finalize that methodology. And so we will be coming back to council as part of our update with the, with bidding, with actual bidding numbers. So we will definitely come back and have a more of a conversation on that. But yes, for the most parts, for the most part, we haven't had a whole lot of folks pushing back. I think, I don't think anybody is happy about, you know, opening up their, their wallets. But for the most part, people are mostly understanding. And again, we'll come back and have a conversation about that and give folks advance notice and an opportunity to come and voice their concerns once again.
Thank you.
I see there is a hand, a hand raised. So Vice Mayor, it might be a good time to take a public comment if there are no other clarifying questions.
Okay, let's do that. Thanks. Our first speaker is Martha.
Hi, I kind of disagree with the statement that there hasn't been any pushback from residents. I've talked to many residents, many of whom were not notified when they purchased their property, that there was an existing contract that made them liable for this. I was not aware of it. In order to pay for anything, I would have to probably sell my house because I'm retired and I live on social security. And I don't know where in the world I would get this money. So, and I've tried to get a lot of answers from the council and I haven't been able to get any so far. So I would literally like to, somebody to look a little further into how the residents feel about this. And I have to say that when this all began, no one, the entire area was invited to give their input on what the design would be like. There was no mention that residents were going to be held liable for any of the cost. It was more of, we have this great grant and we're going to take advantage of it and, and give you this great new feature down to Poplar Beach. And so everybody put everything on their wish list. And then a year and a half, two years later, you know, the nineteen residents were notified that they were going to be on the hook for an unspecified amount of money. So I think this really needs to be looked at really, really carefully because I also asked why our property taxes aren't being used for this. And I heard that there's a concern with general, the general residents of Half Moon Bay, that they shouldn't have to be on the hook for something on Poplar Street. But I would point out that Poplar Street is the main thoroughfare to Poplar Beach and everybody in Half Moon Bay and uses that thoroughfare. And in addition, it's a tourist attraction and so non-residents come and use it. So I don't know why specific residents of Poplar Street should be required to put a really significant amount of funding into this on an individual basis when it's in fact a public's work project. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Martha. I have no other hands raised, Vice Mayor.
Are there any other questions from council or comments?
Would you like me to respond to that last speaker or?
It actually looks like we have another public comment with raised hand.
Yes, Danielle.
Danielle, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would just like to second what Martha is saying. I, I also really appreciate the time that was put into getting the community's input on what the designs would be, especially from residents on Poplar who know their streets so well. But was really disappointed and taken aback not knowing about the cost that would be for fellow residents and that it's only for certain residents on the street, making that cost even greater when it's not shared by the entire Poplar Street residents. So it's also concerning to know as projects do that costs can balloon and change. And then what would, how would that work? How would residents have to pay for that? What would that look like? Or that money come from? Would they then need to pay more? So something that I have been thinking about as this project goes forward.
Thanks, Julia.
Maz, can, can you respond to that?
Sure, I could. I'll just respond a little bit. There was a link in the staff report to the deferred, the deferred street improvement agreements. So these are, there's twenty one properties that are impacted along this stretch. That includes both east and west. I believe it's seven on the east side and fourteen on the west side. And these were agreements that were made during a developments, a redevelopment of, of the homes. And they were actually recorded against the deed. I, I know that sometimes with all those disclosures and all those documents, it can be missed, but those, these are all recorded with that. And as far as the concern with regards to paying more than your fair share, you know, the, the calculations that we had were based on the frontage width of any property. So it would be based on, it would be, it would be weighted based on how much, how wide the property is. Nobody's paying for more than what the frontage of it is. Those deferred street agreements, again, just to, just so I, just to clarify, those are deed restrictions that are made in lieu of the actual improvements being done at the time of that design or redevelopment. So that's where, that's where that comes from. And so in, what we do now is we try to actually build out the improvements rather than asking for deferred street improvement agreements to, so that we don't have this situation in the future, but that's currently how it is. And as far as tonight's item, obviously, we're not talking about the deferred streets, but we will be coming back with our funding plan and we will have more conversations about that at that point. And I would ask anybody that is interested in, you know, whether you want to talk about tonight's item specifically or the deferred streets, I'm, we're always happy to talk to folks. We are, if you want to reach out to myself, Jonathan Wu, or the Poplar Streets main email, please do so. And we will, we're happy to set up time and meet with you all and hear your concerns and talk through some of the things that we've discussed so far.
Vice Mayor Maz, just to say one, add one thing to it. I, I only want to say this, that I think, and again, this will be a policy decision for you as council and, and we'll respect whatever decision you ultimately make. I, I want to be clear for, for you and for the community. We, we went to the community to talk about improvements, but what we really talked about were basic improvements that are typical with any street section and would have been and probably should have been built at the time when those homes were built. Most of these, if not all of the deferred street improvement agreements, I believe, are on the north side of the street, which would be sidewalk, not decomposed granite pathway or anything of that deal. That would have and should have been part of the normal construction process for this. So I, I just want to be clear that, yes, deferring meant that you had to do more work in terms of stormwater because the stormwater rules have changed in the last thirty years since some of those agreements were entered into. The world has changed. They're also, if, if they're in fact required to pay for this, would be in fact sub, benefiting from economy of scale rather than trying to bid this out themselves and dealing with it. So again, there's a big policy issue. I know it's not on the conversation for tonight, but I, I did just want to put on, you know, say out there that, that, that the process and the community process did not include this gold plated project and design. It basically is a very basic street design that complies with current standards and requirements and really little more than that. It just looks different than what is out there today because it would be full improvements. So thank you.
Thank you. With that?
I do have another hand raised if you're open to taking additional comments.
Yes, go ahead.
Dora Flores? Dora? Dora, could you unmute?
Maybe Spanish interpretation?
Possibly. Victor, are you able to?
Great idea.
Okay.
I, I suggest we move on at this point.
Okay. So at this point, shall we invite the mayor back in?
I'm, I'm not sure we've given direction yet to staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. The direction you're asking for? The direction you're asking for is that we accept the phasing of the project. Can I have a motion?
Would you like to be to put it back on the screen?
Um, no, I can go ahead, um, and make the motion. Um, I move that we, uh, receive an update on the progress of the Poplar Street calming, traffic calming and safety project and adopt a resolution approving the amended capital improvement project page, phasing the Poplar Street traffic calming and safety project.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Roback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pedros?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we can move on to item three, C, and for that, no, three B, I'm sorry. We should ask of the mayor to come back in and run the meeting.
I'll ask the city manager if he's texted her.
I'm texting her now.
Great, thank you.
I wonder if it would make sense to take a short break. She may be having some technical difficulties. I noticed she didn't just turn off her camera and mute her microphone. She, she actually dropped off the meeting.
Okay, it's eight twelve. Why don't we reconvene at eight?
Oh, there she is.
There she is. Okay.
Sorry to get everybody excited.
Mayor.
Howdy do. So now we're moving on to item three B, agreement with Infinity Technologies for information technology services.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, tonight I am pleased that we are bringing you the results of our recent request for proposal for IT services for the city of Half Moon Bay. Um, as you may recall, about a year ago, when we brought our last amendment for our current services, we were tasked by the council to go out and see if we are indeed having the best services for what we need with the city. In May, March, um, Brian will be much more thorough with this. We went out for a request for proposal and tonight Brian is here. Brian Lopez, our senior budget analyst in administrative services, is here to bring the results and all the details that went along with it. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to present this to you. So let me get started and share my screen here. All right. So yes, um, I'm going to discuss the IT management RFP as you've all, uh, been informed. Let me go ahead and change the slide here. All right. So, um, yeah, basically, um, as Lisa mentioned, we did start this earlier this year at the conclusion of our, um, at the conclusion of the contract or near the conclusion of the contract with Stepford, Inc. Um, as you may be aware, we've had Stepford, um, as part of our, our IT, uh, division, you know, serving as, as our, um, you know, support for both network and desktop and everything, uh, for about twenty-two years. Um, and the last time we brought the, the, uh, contract forward for approval, a council, you, you all directed us to go ahead and, um, go RFP and, and again, as Lisa mentioned, determine that we're really truly getting the services that we need. Um, and a lot's changed and so, so are our needs. And so, yeah, um, when we went to RFP, uh, we received a lot of quality candidates. We ended up reviewing, um, a, with a diverse, uh, committee. So we actually had a committee of different departments and divisions. So basically got a nice, really healthy sampling from every, every department, division to make sure that we were truly, um, ranking and scoring everything appropriately. And so of those candidates, uh, we are recommending actually that the city contract with Infinity Technologies, technologies, apologies, um, staff found that Infinity Technologies was best positioned to facilitate the city's needs, overall direction, um, the unique qualifications that they have and their, their skillset honestly differentiated themselves from other candidates. And we really truly believe that they are the best fit for the anticipated future needs of the city. Um, and so if the council approves, we would like to have the contract start January first. And we're also proposing that we actually have an overlap with Stepford to facilitate a really smooth, uh, transition and, and have our knowledge base from Stepford transition really smoothly over to Infinity Technologies. And so as you can see on your screen, um, we did receive seven proposals and of those three were qualified under all of the requirements that we had. And we had a pretty, pretty well-developed, um, uh, list of qualifications that we needed, um, to really fulfill out the future, uh, for the city. And so out of those, uh, only three rose to the top. Um, of course, Infinity being, um, ranked number one. And you can kind of see in the chart there, um, how, how it ended up playing out, um, as far as the overall rankings. Um, and you can see how Infinity, uh, definitely came out number one. And so we are obviously recommending, uh, that you adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year contract agreement with Infinity Technologies to provide information technology services at a cost of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars per year, with a ten percent contingency for unforeseen additional needs, um, at sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars per year. And so with that, I am going to ask for any questions or if you have any other clarification, uh, questions or anything like that. But I also wanted to let you know, um, we actually invited Mohammed Ahmed. He's the president of Vettity Technologies, um, on tonight. Uh, and so he can also answer some additional questions, uh, but I didn't want to introduce him to you all, um, so that you can have a face to the, to the name and, and the face of the company. Now Mohammed, if you'd like, you can also, uh, say a couple of things if you prefer.
Thank you, uh, Brian. Uh, good evening, Honorable, uh, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Mohammed again, uh, with Infinity Technologies. And, uh, we, um, are really truly looking forward to serving the city of Half Moon Bay and really trying to, uh, provide all the necessary services and beyond really, uh, to the city. And, um, just a little bit about myself and my background. I've been in local government for twenty-two years now, uh, all on the IT side. Uh, we also do a lot of GIS integrations and, um, we live, breathe, uh, local government. So we're really excited, um, and, um, we're looking forward to a great partnership.
Thank you. Um, any council members have questions for Mohammed? I would just like to say that I was happy to see that as part of the scope of, of work, there's, um, a requirement for bonds during emergencies. I guess at a certain time you have to make sure that we're up and running because, um, a big part of our, um, local emergency plan is going to be emergency communications. So, you know, robust IT during those times is going to be, you know, very important. So I was, uh, delighted to see that. Can you elaborate on that at all?
We actually work with many cities, uh, EOC operations. And, uh, there's many nuances to that, you know? There's the actual setup and making sure all the techno- technological features are there in terms of, you know, uh, laptops and computers and whatnot. But then also streamlining some of those things. One of the things we found out is, hey, how can we set up a EOC Intranet through Office 365 SharePoint or other ways that we can have it stood up? So in a matter of, you know, minutes, we can be online. And, uh, that's what we really will try to bring into this. Um, and EOC now is not just normal disasters, it could be cyber disasters too. So also taking that a little bit further and making sure we incorporate those into our EOC operations.
Yes, that, that certainly is important to me. Um, I also like the fact that you have GIS experience. And, uh, you know, we're not doing a lot of that ourselves at the moment, but, um, I certainly would like to see us have a more robust GIS, uh, capacity and perhaps you can help with that. So I was glad to see that experience there.
Can you explain what GIS means?
Geographic Information Systems?
Thank you.
So that we have, you know, like our land use plan and our zoning and, you know, all the APNs for parcels. You know, we can have layers, you know, demographic layers and, um, infrastructure and, and all that stuff so that, you know, it's right there in the computer and you can see, you know, the impacts to those layers under certain, you know, scenarios and things like that. So maybe Mohammed could give us a little, uh, summary there too, from a professional standpoint.
Yeah, it's, I, I always tell people, I get the question all the time, what is GIS, right? And it's such a, uh, unique, uh, front. I always tell people, think of Google Maps. When you're going to a restaurant, that's data layers. You're going to a coffee shop, that's all data layers. So it's essentially mapping with data components on top of it. And, and from a local government standpoint, you, you hit it, Mayor, right off the park. You know, APNs, um, from a resident standpoint, you could see, you know, what my garbage pickup days are and what information you need on your parcel. So it really helps. And then also from a city standpoint, you can integrate city software into it, right? So the information that public always calls and asks for or emails about, you could put it into a map and show that information directly on your website instead of having to put those requests in through, uh, the website.
Very powerful tool.
Absolutely.
Do we have any hands raised, uh, in the public?
Uh, we do. Michelle Dragley? Hey, Michelle, uh, you have an older version of Zoom, so I need to promote you to panelists. So please just make sure your camera is off.
Hi, um, will Granicus be remodeled? The website, basically, the platform?
I'm, we're trying to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yeah, sorry, uh, yes. So, uh, there is actually, um, also Granicus isn't necessarily part of this project. We definitely are always looking to, uh, you know, see ways that we can improve, um, our technology and, and the way it interfaces with the public. Um, and so we, uh, you know, if there's any, if you feel like there's any inadequacies or things that we can improve, you can actually forward that to us. You're welcome to forward it actually to me, um, if you'd like, uh, or to Lisa. And we can go ahead and, and address that or see what, what options we might have. Um, at this point in time, I don't believe we have any, um, plans necessarily overhaul Granicus particularly. But I know we are looking at our, um, our city website, um, you know, for the future as well and a few other things, um, to, to really improve our, our, um, our communication and, and our, our tools that the community interacts with.
Brian, if I could add, uh, just to clarify, Granicus is what we use for our agenda management system and the portions of our website that are the agenda pages are through Granicus. Our website is through Civic Plus and we are going through a website redesign, uh, right now that should be completed sometime next year, so.
Anyone else?
I don't have any other hands raised, to be honest.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, that could be have a motion then. Well, I will move it. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year contract agreement with Infinity Technologies to provide information technology services at a cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars per year with a ten percent contingency for unforeseen additional needs at sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars per year.
I'll second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Roback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pedros?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three C, input on League of California Cities Legislative Platform for twenty twenty-three.
Yes, thank you. Um, so as a, uh, department, league department officer for the League of California Cities, I am included in the League Leaders Workshop this year, which is where the League of California Cities sets their action agenda for the following year. And so they convene, uh, the Cal Cities Board of Directors and then leadership from the various caucuses, uh, the departments and the various committees for the league. And essentially, this group creates and sets what the league's action agenda will be for the following year based on a number of priorities and input. And, uh, member survey was conducted by the league to all members, um, about a month or two ago. And then utilizing that, the Board of Directors adopts the action agenda for the following year, the day after our workshop. And Colleen, if you could throw up the slides real quick. So given that I am in the room and I have our policy, I wanted to bring, uh, this to the city council so that you could direct staff as to how best to advocate on behalf of Half Moon Bay as part of this process. So this is what the league's action agenda was for this year. And you'll see, um, in the attachment to the staff report, there was two pages worth of priorities, all based around maybe ten different areas. And then they take those to formulate that into four different main points. And so on the next slide, these are the topics of interest and I have put in, um, each of the various topics from, or the priority areas from these topics, if you weren't to look at any of those on the screen. But I'm essentially looking for, uh, your top three, um, items that you would want to see molded into the action agenda for next year. This would be what the league bases their advocacy efforts, um, both state and federally, um, throughout the next legislative session.
Um, so you're looking for input on the topics or the, the items that are, um, listed under the, those headings? You know, it, it's kind of hard to, um, have a discussion about all of them because, you know, it's, a lot of it is mom and apple pie. A lot of them are just things that we have to look at, um, because of existing law. So it's hard to, you know, to, for me anyway, to, to boil it down. Because I think that, you know, as bills come along, you know, we may diverge from the California League of Cities. You know, being in the coastal zone, we're often, you know, exempted from, you know, uh, sections of various pieces of legislation. So I, I certainly wouldn't want to, you know, pin ourselves down to, uh, supporting league initiatives that may not work for us. But in any case, I'll, I'll let Harvey weigh in. Harvey?
It's an incredible laundry list of priorities. It would take, uh, a week to discuss it in any intelligent way. A couple of things immediately came out to me and, uh, I'll just bring them up. The public safety topic, sounds like these are things that, um, Donald Trump would be, uh, totally in favor of. It's, um, you know, back to blue kind of thing. From my perspective, I don't want to be part of a, a city that, um, says that, uh, our high priorities are law enforcement, recruitment, uh, public safety, official suicide prevention, uh, improved illegal fireworks regulation, organized retail theft, Prop forty-seven reform. I, you know, one of the, the charges was which of these priorities do we not want to support? And I don't want to support any of those, uh, but I would like to support in a public safety way, uh, oversight of law enforcement, uh, something that we're doing on a, a countywide basis soon. And I think that, um, that sort of legislation would And I think that, um, that sort of legislation, which some of which already exists, uh, is important. So, uh, that's, that's priority one for me. I'll give you a couple of others that are not so, uh, controversial. Uh, one of the things listed was California Voter Rights Act legislation. I would think that's important, uh, and that legislation has to do with, uh, redistricting. And, uh, it's very controversial here, but I think, um, that, uh, if we can get uh, clarity on, on what redistricting really supposed to do at a local level, especially in a small city, uh, that would be admirable. And, um, if I had to pick a third item, um, building decarbonization was listed and that to me is, uh, important and that relevant to what we've been doing and will be doing shortly. And as I said, it could take a couple of weeks to go through all of this stuff to really, uh, say what we would, uh, support. But those three items immediately popped to mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Reddick, if I could add, uh, a couple of points, uh, to your point also about being a coastal city, I do want to point out that the Board of Directors is made up of a pretty diverse group of cities across the state. There are representatives from rural cities, um, small cities, large cities, uh, coastal cities, things of that nature. Then further, we, this is anything that the league's action agenda does not tie us to supporting, um, anything that the league does. So we have our own legislative advocacy program as well and through our contract with Townsend, adopt our own legislative platform each year. And we are beginning the process of working on that and coming up with a draft and proposed legislative platform that would then come before the legislative subcommittee early next year, then also before the council for adoption. And that is what we will use as the city to guide our advocacy efforts throughout the session with taking any positions on any bills. And so this is more about input on Cal Cities' action agenda as a whole of what we might think is important for cities of the state generally. But I do want to clarify that we then will also adopt our own legislative platform, uh, very specific for Half Moon Bay.
Yes, uh, thank you for clarifying that. I, 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 I'd like to just generally comment on it. And, and first of all, uh, to Harvey's point about public safety, I think there are definitely things on there that we do want to track for sure. Having just run, uh, an election campaign, I can tell you that petty crime is on the, the minds of a lot of people in my district. And as you've seen on Nextdoor, people generally, you know, on the coast side. And, you know, Prop 47, largely to blame. And I think that the goals of Prop 47 are thought of. You know, we don't want to be spending, you know, such a huge chunk of the state's revenue on jails and prisons instead of education and recreation, the things that build community health and resilience. But, um, you know, there's definitely been an increase in petty crimes as a result of Prop 47. And, um, people are noticing it. And we don't have the update yet, um, what's been going on in Half Moon Bay. I know it's slightly down in the county, uh, this past year, but, but it's been rising ever since, uh, 2014 when Prop 47 was passed. So I certainly want to track that, uh, and, and see, you know, what's going on. We certainly don't, I think, want to revert to, you know, the old paradigm, but we, we certainly want to follow it. And actually, I think public safety recruitment is an important issue. There was a wonderful article recently, I think it was, might have been Sunday. The title was, you know, the, the stolen bikes of Vermont. And it's, it's, it started, you know, surfacing as a lot of stolen bikes, you know, in a university town, tourist town, in Lake Shaw plain. But a lot of it had to do with the fact that people in Burlington, Vermont had defunded the police and they couldn't keep staff anymore. Uh, and, and that, that's actually a trend, you know, across the country. A lot of, um, public safety officers are, are, are leaving for, for other jobs. And, um, you know, we still have issues of violent crime that have to be addressed. So I certainly want us to follow what's being, you know, done on the issue of law enforcement recruitment and retention. We still have to fight crime, right? And I agree with you, we want more oversight, that's important too. But, uh, you know, an important goal for every elected official is to make sure our residents feel safe. So I, I want us to, to follow that. That, that's all I have on public safety. I think all the environment things were, were right on. I think water is really important. It's going to be very important for the coast side and making sure that money is set aside for water infrastructure. You know, we have aging water tanks, the two of about nine million a piece that have to be replaced. We need recycled water. So water is certainly a priority, you know, for me. Dealing with homelessness, uh, we certainly want to follow the legislation and, and support, uh, legislation, you know, compassionate legislation that actually serves. We have shelters as, as well as the community. So that's really important to me. And local control on housing. So those are kind of top of mind. Yes, decarbonization, that was part of the environmental thing. They can't ask us to make huge changes, you know, without providing resources. The state does that notoriously, mandates, um, sea level rise and everything, and then there's no money or outpittance of money. So, um, we want to make sure that, you know, that the legislature, and I know that Josh Becker, our senator, has admitted to this, is making sure that there's, you know, money for communities, you know, to implement the, the state's climate goals. And I, I'm with Harvey, uh, he didn't really say this, but I'm in favor of getting rid of district elections for us. Yes, we want to understand, um, the intention of the law, but I don't think it works here. You know, I think to hear, um, in the small community. So I want us to follow the Santa Monica lawsuit and I want us to follow, um, any initiatives, you know, statewide to, you know, address the problems with district voters. I think there are many. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. Other council members want to weigh in? Joaquin?
Well, from the list that I, that I see, you know, housing, you know, uh, Half Moon Bay, I think we're doing, we are really working on it. We have, uh, different groups in our community taking part on this. You know, addressing the need of, uh, not affordable housing, but actually low income housing. You know, referring to essential workers or farm workers that are losing their, uh, their housing. I mean, every, every week, we have a group of, uh, of community members losing their housing. And that's, that's been my focus. You know, uh, as you know, that's, it's been my priority from day one, even from, uh, time running, right? My campaign, about how can we bring housing to the community that needs it? You know, there's groups in our community that address this, uh, this topic. I mean, every, every week, uh, finding ways of how to build housing. Now, you know, the city is doing a, I think is doing a great job, especially by hiring somebody to focus, you know, and providing housing for a community. And, you know, and looking for, uh, for sites, uh, here in, in Half Moon Bay, uh, to be able to build and just focusing on the need. And, you know, it was brought up today, the, during public comment, uh, Mr. Ferrer, I know, commented, you know, we can do it. You know, we focus, we're really interested in building housing for community, we will. You know, there's ways, uh, that dealing with, you know, with the homeless population. You know, if we deal with the homeless population, we have a large group of community members living, sleeping in their car, in their vehicle. And many of them actually are holding a job. You know, all the community members, they're just renting a small space where they can actually lay down and sleep for, for a few hours and then they go out to the street. So there's a lot of things that I think that we are doing right, you know, and we, but, but I think we can do better. I think we can do better, you know, focusing on the need of our community. When it comes about the safety, you know, public safety, that's another, you know, topic for me. You know, I, uh, actually believe in, uh, the prevention, you know, of crime. You know, we know that, uh, our students, you know, and then the school district are being affected by this. You know, I hear from more community members, uh, the, you know, petty crime. You know, there's, so there's some other crime activity, uh, this around, this happening around our community right now. And that we, it is concerning. And the way our school district is responding, I don't think is proper. I don't think the school district is ready to deal with what is happening in our schools, especially high school, with high school students. So there's several things that we can do. Like I said, uh, the prevention, you know, it comes, you know, with education, what's happening. You know, the pandemic really affected our community, you know, or the students that had no access, uh, you know, to the internet, you know, to wifi, to do the schoolwork. You know, our parents that had to go to work and we're now, we're supervising their, their students, their children, you know, that, that, I mean, affected our, our community.
Yeah, I actually think that, um, sorry.
And we're not really, you know, and, uh, talking about the bite off, working with the law enforcement. You know, I'm actually looking forward to, you know, to working with the new sheriff, you know, about how can we better engage, you know, or law enforcement, you know, to prevent, you know, petty crime and to prevent, you know, things from happening with our community. You know, uh, I mean, I can care less about cannabis, you know, that's not, uh, something I really care about. You know, that's something I've been against, you know, to come, to bring it into our community. So that's, uh, you know, there's, there's several things, you know, uh, working with the environment. You know, uh, I know Half Moon Bay, we are working on it, uh, to be able to, uh, the organization, you know, using the, you know, farming technique, you know, uh, being a, a farming community, uh, that will actually, uh, help with the environment. So, but to me, you know, housing is a, it's a, it's a top priority. You know, we is really hurting our community. And I'm very supportive of what, uh, what we are doing, you know, and our city staff are doing for, to bring the housing for community.
I just want to say one thing before I call on the vice mayor. But I agree with you on housing. I don't think the, um, the resources we need to do it will actually come from the state. I think we really have to work the federal government. And, you know, Townsend actually, you know, does, has lobbying effort in, um, Washington DC. I, I think we need to be pushing for the federal government. You know, they've abandoned their housing mission, their, you know, their affordable housing mission and have done so for several years. And, you know, the federal government is the one that has the scope and authority to really help out here. So, um, yes, we certainly want to, um, get action from the state, but we also want to see a lot more action from the federal government.
Well, I, I think we're really moving forward with that. You know, uh, our federal representatives are focusing on the need of our community. You know, they're engaging more with our community. So I, I see that help coming to us, uh, to, to be able to provide, uh, the, the affordable and low income housing that we need.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um, I would agree with Councilmember Jimenez. The thing that rises to the top for me in this huge list is housing. That's number one and it's, it's, it's far and above more important than almost anything else we can do. It's an immediate need, it's immediate crisis. And, and it's something that we need to be dealing with. And I think getting ourselves, um, going through this huge list and saying, well, we need to be dealing with recycled water and we need to be dealing with oversight of the sheriff's department. All of those things are important, but none of them will have the impact and make the changes that are necessary to make this a vital community more than housing will. So housing comes, housing comes number first. In addition to that, the things that, um, I think are critical are, um, climate change, issues related directly to climate change. And that includes a lot of different issues, but, but, um, regulations about fire, regulations about water, recycled water, all of those things. Uh, electrification, um, are critical. So I, I, I can't look at this list and make much sense out of it. It's, it's too broad. I would very much like to hear a little bit more about what, uh, our, our cities, and Townsend, um, are concentrating on and what, what rises to the top in terms of priorities there, here for us.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be good for us, you know, the, the legislative committee is going to have to meet. But it would be great to hear from our state legislators, um, about what they're thinking and, you know, can we, you know, influence them? And, and hear from our federal legislators as well. It'd be great to have, you know, conversations with, with them about, you know, what the needs are. Certainly, you know, short-term rentals, based on our experience with the coastal commission, you know, the treatment by the coastal commission of, of short-term rentals might at some point require legislative action. We want to keep an eye on that too. But, yeah, I, I, I think it's going to be sort of, you know, a multi-pronged, uh, effort, both state and federal in the coming year. Harvey?
I agree that I think the important thing is to work with Townsend to get some of this legislation that is directly relevant to what we care about. I had a little experience with the League of Cities. I was on the Coastal Cities Caucus. And, uh, that's when I learned that, uh, it was really totally prejudiced against what they call the environmentalists. And, uh, the, the coastal commission was constantly, uh, made fun of in many different ways. So I don't think much good is going to come out of this, uh, effort of, uh, having this, uh, action agenda. I think we should concentrate on, uh, what we can do with Townsend to, to directly, um, influence, uh, some of the federal, state and local legislation. So that's my two cents.
I think the mayor might be frozen again. But we do have two, uh, hands raised.
Go ahead with public comment then.
Yes, thanks. Uh, Mike Ferrera?
Thank you, Council. Uh, I, I think, uh, the council members' comments thus far are all appropriate. If I can just add one little thing to it, that, uh, whether you do it on your own or whether you do it through the League of Cities is, uh, in order to achieve your electrification goals, you really need help from the city, from the county, no, excuse me, the state in allocating the federal funding. Because I don't think we can achieve electrification on the schedule we want if the homeowners have to pay for the whole thing. We really, we really need help to, to make that happen. And I don't see that anywhere in the League of Cities, that that's an enormous expenditure that's needed. Because, well, you saw the reaction the last time around from people that thought they were going to get $70,000 worth of expenses to convert. So, uh, I think we can get, we can do good work that would cost less and could be partially subsidized as well. Little PCE can't do that on its own. They're helping, but they can't carry the freight. And, uh, so we really do need the state to allocate some of that, Inflation Reduction Act or whatever that large funding is that comes to California to allocate some of it toward electrification. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, I did see that. It, it is there under the environment heading, uh, on the, uh, the league list. Very similar. It's basically. You know, very summarizing. It's basically. Well, again, I think we want to look at our federal, talk to our federal legislators, you know, about tax credits as well. You know, both state and federal. Mike?
Our next speaker is Ricardo Reyes.
Uh, yo solo tengo un comentario. Bueno, es un.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Que tal? Eh, habla, habla Víctor Hernández. Voy a ser el traductor de usted hoy. Y para que todo mundo escucha lo que usted tenga que decir. Mantenga ahora sí los trozos de información para poder traducirlos, ¿sí? Breves. Okay. Adelante, por favor.
Que tal, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ricardo. Soy parte de la comunidad.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ricardo. I'm part of the community.
Uh, yo solo quiero hacer una pregunta o una duda más más bien.
I just basically have a question, or I I want to get myself out of this doubt.
Eh, para para todas las propuestas que tienen y todos los proyectos de la ciudad eh, de esta comunidad se requiere recaudar dinero, ¿verdad?
So for all the proposals and projects that you have going on in the city, you need to raise funds, right?
Okay, entonces esto esto esta recaudación se hace a base de los impuestos de todos, de toda la comunidad, de todo lo que gastamos, todo lo que ganamos. Y si no, si si no hay gente, de dónde lo van a a recaudar?
Uh huh. So all of this, like, you know, raising funds and all of this uh, uh, income coming in. Uh, you you get everything out of taxes and all of the costs included. Um, so the question is, if there's no people, where are you, who are you going to tax, or who is going to be taxed?
Y lo digo esto porque la crisis de 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 vivienda es es grave y nos están obligando a irnos a otro lado donde donde hay otra oportunidad. Y pues, si no hay gente, de dónde van a sacar los los recursos para para los proyectos?
So I say this because, you know, the housing crisis is for real, and it is very severe. And so that's causing us uh, to go elsewhere where there are other opportunities. And so, eh, again, if there are no people to tax, how will you get this money to fund the projects or proposals?
Entonces, mi es 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 esencial o es, sería muy bueno que se enfocaran en viviendas. Entonces nos retienen aquí y y vamos a gastar aquí, vamos a a ganar dinero aquí y lo vamos a dejar aquí en la comunidad, como lo estamos haciendo.
Gracias.
Gracias.
So essentially, you you know, or something that is good is to maybe focus on housing. Um, so that way we remain here. Uh, we will earn our money here and we'll spend our money within the community. Thank you.
Uh, Usharia Dezu?
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Uh, estado escuchando los comentarios y de algunos miembros del consilio.
I've been listening to the comments and to some council members.
Uh, que buscar fondos para la gran necesidad que hay de viviendas aquí en la costa.
So, you know, for looking for money for the the great need for housing here on the coast.
Y buscar personas de congresistas o del congreso, personas que puedan ayudar a hacer es, a construir casas accesibles para todas.
So and also look for like maybe congress uh, members or people who can actually help build affordable housing?
Yo pienso que si nos unimos todos como comunidad, como consilio, como las personas del congreso, se va a lograr.
So I think if we all come together, congressmen, council uh, members, uh, I think we can achieve this.
Sabemos que hay muchas cosas que neces- se necesita aquí en el pueblo también, pero es una prioridad las viviendas accesibles para las personas que se viven y trabajan aquí mismo.
Momento, por favor.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we know that, uh, you know, there are many things that are uh, important here uh, in this town. But um, affordable housing is one of those high needs. Um, and um, it it's 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 done for people who actually live here.
Uh, yo pienso que siempre la unión hace la fuerza y nosotros estaremos unidos como comunidad y esperamos la unidad de ustedes también como consilio y como personas de fe también.
Momento. So I think that uh, being united is uh, strength, and we are community in strength. And also, um, you know, you too as a as a council and um, as faith uh, based people as well.
Este, pues muchas gracias y espero que esta sea la pri- la primer prioridad que puedan poner más énfasis porque sabemos que es lo primordial aquí. Muchas gracias.
So thank you very much. We're hoping that this is um, you know, a top priority that you can place more emphasis on. Thank you very much.
No other comments, Mayor?
Okay, anybody else want to comment before we close this item? Uh, Jessica, do you feel like you've been given a clear?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, thank you. I think uh, based on the input tonight, I have what I need for this workshop. And then again, just to clarify that after we, the committee assignments in January, the lead subcommittee will be to start working on the city's legislative platform for next year. Um, and that'll come before the council. It will be doing lots of, you know, outreach with our legislators and taking positions on bills as they come, so. More to come on that.
I'm I'm glad that you're, you know, participating in this process because really, if we had legislation we wanted, we would need the support of other cities that are members of the League of Cities. So, you know, it's a small city, we have to leverage a lot of other resources. You know, money, relationships, influence. So um, it's important to be a part of this process. And uh, Jessica's is um, engaging more. And I think that's, it's, uh, pretty soon we'll be, you know, appointing a legislative committee and moving forward on our next session. It'll be here uh, in just a couple of weeks, actually.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do we have any commissioner committee updates?
Madam Mayor, we have one update um, from Maz. He will give an update on a recent BPAC meeting. I'll share that we do not have updates from the Rec- Recreation Commission or the Planning Commission. There haven't been meetings since our last council meeting. There is a planning commission next Tuesday night at seven PM. We'd encourage the community to tune into that. The Recreation Commission's schedule uh, for this time of year, um, unfortunately being the fourth Wednesday of the month, uh, really falls either very close to or during the holidays. And so uh, what we've done the last several years is we've canceled the final two meetings of the year, November and December. And then we schedule a meeting in mid-December to to cover those topics. Um, I I unfortunately, I don't have the date in front of me for the um, December meeting. Jessica or John might know that off the top of their head.
December seventh, Matthew.
Great. So December seventh, we'll have our final Recreation Commission meeting this year. Uh, there still are a few uh, planning commission meetings ahead, again, starting with uh, next Tuesday night. Uh, with that, I'll turn the time over to Maz for uh, an update on the BPAC. And start by explaining what BPAC means.
Thank you, Matthew. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, also known as BPAC, meets uh, bimonthly. Apologies. Um, and um, our last meeting uh, was on November third, and uh, there was a couple of items um, that I wanted to report out on. The first one was, we went over the e-bike survey results um, that was done earlier this year. Um, as far as uh, a lot of the information that came out of it. I think the biggest uh, thing that folks really uh, commented on were a couple of areas. One was, more of the concern was related to speeds than it was specific to the types of vehicles of uh, electric uh, motorized uh, vehicles or uh, devices. And um, in addition to the, to that, there was uh, some comments and questions about uh, additional improvements to the trail, to the infrastructure. Um, so a great, a lot of great feedback. Um, and we received uh, a good con- we had a good conversation, received some good feedback from our community members as well as our uh, committee members. And um, so next steps will be to look at our um, municipal code and ordinances and come back to city council with uh, a draft policy for discussion and further comments. We also went over the uh, CCG, the City County Association of Governments, um, also known as CCG, Micro Mobility Study. Um, I did a quick presentation that was provided to the CCG uh, member agencies. They're essentially doing a pilot program um, for uh, scooters and e-bikes. Um, they're looking at Pullman South San Francisco right now um, as a study area. Uh, we'll, we'll have more information and discussions on this, but essentially they're, they're looking at doing a uh, county-wide uh, micro-mobility study and and uh, coordination. So essentially, uh, they're starting out those two areas. But um, if you think about it, rather than having multiple different types of vendors in in each jurisdiction, uh, what this would do is uh, CCG and and the county would have a number of vendors that were pre uh, pre-qualified and pre-approved that would be able to service our overall community. Um, so anyways, there, there'll be more conversations and discussions about that, but we, we did a quick update on that. And uh, uh, we provided some comments uh, to CCG on on that pilot program. Um, that's all I have to uh, share on that one.
Great, thank you, Maz. Um, are there any city council reports? Um, so we had a SAM meeting um, last night, and we had a presentation on um, the initial work being done by integral consultants who are evaluating um, potential flooding and sea level rise and stormwater impacts to the sewer treatment plant. So they uh, brought some initial slides um, showing the area and the areas likely to be impacted. Uh, it's only the beginning of a fairly lengthy modeling effort that won't really have results for discussion until early in twenty twenty-three. But um, they at least were able to identify uh, the problem areas. Turns out groundwater is not one of them, which is news for the electrical system at SAM. Um, one problem area is the estuary where Puliceto's Creek enters the ocean. Right now, it goes around this SAM plant and then meanders up the beachways. They're thinking that their modeling might very well show that the mouth is going to migrate south and, you know, basically aim directly at the the treatment plant. So they'll be modeling them to show that. And um, I went to a CCG meeting, but there wasn't much on the agenda. Supposed to be about the performance evaluation for the general manager, but that didn't end up happening. Um, I did attend the veterans event uh, last week, which was a wonderful event. Staff did a great job um, putting together a program and decorating that Dootch Park. And there was a wonderful turnout of veterans and a great speech of mine uh, by Warren Slocum, county supervisor, who himself has made the status of veterans in the county a priority. And uh, Matthew made some, you know, great remarks. So it was a wonderful event all around and something that we'd like to do on an annual basis. So this would be like the first annual Veterans Day event. And that uh, council members, uh, Joaquin Jimenez and Harvey Barbock were also in attendance. So great event. Anybody else? Uh, any um, future agenda items? Anyway, okay. Let's pull that one and um, we can move on to adjournments. So our next meeting is uh, Tuesday, but it's December sixth. Am I correct on that?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
All right, great. I hope you all have a lovely evening.
You too.
Good night, everybody.
All right.
Thank you, you too.